Third, 2023 Twelton City Council, Regular Council Meeting. Tonight, we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilor Sacco.
All right, let me quickly stand up, face the flag, place your right hand on your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to public comment, and public comment is an opportunity for anyone in the room here today or in Zoom. We'd like to address the council regarding an item that is not on our agenda tonight. Please keep your comments to about two, three minutes. If there's anyone here in the room right now who would like to address council, this will be the appropriate time. Anybody coming up, ready in Zoom? All right, okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. The consent agenda, those items are considered routine. It will be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like one of the items removed and heard separately later tonight. The ninth consent agenda consists of four items. Item number one, consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of January 9th, 2023. Item number two, consideration of resolution number 5666-23, authorizing the city of Twelton to enter into a Twelton watershed improvement grant agreement with the Twelton Soil and Water Conservation District. Item number three is consideration of resolution number 5667-23, authorizing the city manager to execute grant agreements with the Washington County for Fitness Programs hosted by the Juanita Poll Center for fiscal year 2223. And finally, item number four, consideration of resolution number 5668-23, authorizing the city manager to execute grant agreements with Washington County for Social Programs hosted by the Juanita Poll Center for fiscal year 2223. Running council would like an item pulled from the consent agenda and addressed later on this evening. I have a motion as second to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on the motions? All of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, unanimous, all right. We've gone to special reports. Special report number one, Twelton Youth Advisory Council Annual Report, Julie in the YAC. We haven't seen the YAC in a long time in person. Welcome, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Bubinick and members of the council. My name is Avery Walters.
Oliver Wolf.
I'm Lucy Austin.
And I'm Ava Marsh.
And we are here to update you on YAC activities for the past year.
Twelton Youth Advisory Council works to improve the lives of the youth by advocating for device needs, building relationships, and providing a link from the youth to the government.
So here are our members, we have 11 total. We have two seniors, five juniors, three sophomores, and one freshman. We are currently accepting applications for new members of any grade, and the information is available online.
We meet our goals through three main ways, advocacy, activities, and education.
One of the ways we meet our goals is through advocacy. We do this by meeting with other groups and organizations to give them the youth perspective. This past year, we've met with the Veterans Plaza, the Climate Action Plan, and the Parks Bond. One of our current projects we're working on is our vertical garden project. Through this project, we're hoping to promote climate awareness, and we're hoping to show some of the benefits of wall gardens and highlight some of the Oregon native plants. We're hoping for this project to be a demonstration project to possibly continue on to other areas. And right now, this project's going to be installed at the shed near the softball fields at Twelton Community Park, and we're going to be installing in the spring of this year.
Just last year, the Youth Advisory Council volunteered at many different city events, those being Concerts in the Park, Viva Twelton, the Giant Pumpkin Regatta, and the Blender Dash. At the concerts in the parks, we sold popcorn and snow cones. And at Viva Twelton and the Giant Pumpkin Regatta, we made balloon animals. All of these volunteer events had tip donations, which we are using to fundraise for the Youth Advisory Council. And at the Blender Dash, we led the kids and helped run the course.
So here are some pictures of us volunteering at those events. On the left are the concerts in the park with the popcorn sales. The middle is the high school club fair where we hope to inspire fellow youth. And on the right is the Blender Dash where we made balloon animals.
These are a couple more pictures. On the left, we have a picture from the Blender Dash where we drew color and we also guided the paths for the run. And then to the left, we have the Pumpkin Regatta where we were very busy making balloon animals. We also ended up making one for Corgi too, which was awesome. And we use tips from that to fundraise for our trips.
We also meet our goal through education. Recently, some of our members went to the National League of Cities City Summit where they got some new ideas they're going to be implementing into our plans. And then the coming weeks, more of our members are going to go to the Oregon Youth Summit to get more ideas.
So me and Ava had the opportunity to attend NLC at Kansas City to represent our town on a nationwide scale.
There were over 200 youth participants at the whole convention, and we were able to go and network with other youth councils. We participated in sessions on youth engagement, civil discourse, mental health, and entrepreneurship. We were able to learn about other projects that youth councils are addressing. And then we also got to tour the historic 18th and Vine District.
So we definitely learned a lot on this journey. We are starting working on a survey, which we hope to send out to the youth in our community. And we hope to learn more about mental health first aid and other ways we can support youth and their mental health.
This is a picture of the youth attendees. We got to talk and network with all of these people, and we learned so many things about their areas, where they came from, and how they're addressing issues, and it was a lot of fun.
So we appreciate your continued support, and we are looking forward to reporting on a more regular schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooks.
Anyway, I appreciate all of you. I have the good fortune of seeing you around. I'm thinking about the Blender Dash because it was the first thing that we kind of did in person. And I remember talking to some of you that day and being really excited to be back out. And I think I've seen you at the popcorn, I've eaten the snow cones. And then we had a really nice time in Kansas City as well, so it was nice. I've been, I've seen youth advisory in other, this time was two young ladies. So it was nice to see you in leadership and doing what you're doing. And then finally, I just want to compliment you on your project with the green walls. That sounds really exciting, and I'm curious. Well, tell me a little bit, where does it go on the, on the building that you're putting it on?
Yeah, so at the park, there's this one side of the shed that's next to the path. And we're getting some, I don't remember exactly where we got them, but there's like wall installation planters. And you basically just attach them to the wall. You just get some simple little pots that are like preplanted, and we'll put those in there. And then we're also thinking of putting up some like signage that displays some of the research about the Oregon native plants. And since it's by a walkway, we're hoping people will read that a little bit and get to learn a little bit about them.
And then how do they get watered?
We're planning on having, we're working with the park maintenance to help us water it. And maybe later on, we'll do some roof irrigation, but we're just looking at different ideas for that.
Councilor Sacco and Councilor Hillier.
I just want to take a moment while you're here to say thank you for your service to the community. And I know that there's lots of things that you could be doing with your time as young adults. And I just want to thank you very much for what you're doing here at Twelton.
Yes, I'd like to echo that. And I know I've gotten to see some of you around at different events. And I think you even helped us with some of the pumpkin, at our pumpkin booth for Twelton together. Some of you were just running around making, making your crazy balloons, and the kids were enjoying them. And just watching the kids' faces as you interact with them and asking them questions and enjoying the time with them. You know, you make a difference every single time you, you look at them and interact with them and their families. And so I know you're serving our community in a variety of ways. But just that connection that you're making with different parts of our community, I just can't say thank you enough for just creating protective factors for the younger people. And about the mental health, I'd love to learn a little bit more about that. So maybe I can connect with you at a different time. Because there are some youth mental health first aid trainings coming up and some other things that are happening that maybe we could partner on. So thank you for your work and caring about your fellow classmates and other youth and people in our community. They're amazing. Thank you.
Rachel Pril.
Yeah, I just love that you're out there and being an example with your, you know, showing your leadership and being engaged in the community. I also wanted to add that I really appreciate that you're giving input like on our plan reaction plan and other things. We're making decisions and we're trying to make decisions for the future, and you're going to be the people living here. So we want to know your thoughts if that is going to affect us. I really appreciate that.
Senator Gonzalez.
Thank you very much for being an example. Exactly what we look for is for community participation, very helpful. I'm in landscaping. One small tip is if you're looking for native plants, and the information is a local nursery called Boski Dale. They specialize only in Oregon native plants, which is phenomenal.
I'd have a question, and it might be more, it's pre-COVID question, so might be before you guys run YAC. Back in the day, we used to have the Anti-Bullying Day with the kids making the transition into Hazbrook. Is that, eventually you think that's going to come back? Or that's something you don't have the capacity to do? Julie's grimacing back there.
Blank stares. Hello, Mayor. Julie Ludeman, Recreation Manager. We don't currently have that planned for this year, but there's, you never know.
It seemed it was very well attended and was a huge event.
It was, it was.
YAC was full hands on deck then. Well, thank you all for coming tonight. As Councilor Sacco said, and Councilor Hillier, you took time out of your night to visit us tonight, and I very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to our second special report, the Twelton Arts Advisory Committee Annual Report.
A little bit of rearranging here. All right.
I'm a theater artist, I have to redo a set.
Well, hello again, Mayor Bubinick, council. I'm Julie Ludeman, Recreation Manager, and I am pleased to be here tonight with Janet Steiger Kar, Chair of the Twelton Arts Advisory Committee. And I'm going to stop talking and let Janet take it away.
Thank you, Julie. Forgive me if I stand. I'm an actor. I have to stand to deliver my lines. Thank you. Twelton Arts Advisory Committee, who are we? I love this mission statement, so I am going to read it out loud. Twelton Arts Advisory Committee's mission is to support, connect, and inspire the creation and integration of all art forms into our city's rich cultural heritage and vibrant future. We believe that the involvement in the arts creates a more energetic, engaging, welcoming, livable community. And further, we believe that art itself facilitates strong communities through connection, culture, creativity, imagination, and inspiration. This is us. Top line, our two staff, wonderful people that we couldn't do it without, and our council liaison, thank you so much. Just below Julie is our newest member, Jeannie Hart. And the rest of the faces you've probably seen via Zoom over the last couple of years. What we do, we have monthly meetings. We represent Twelton Arts to the council and to the public. We attend activities and events. We encourage opportunities for arts recognition. In fact, we need to get on that one this year too. We stimulate private and public support for the arts. 2022 accomplishments, this is an overview. We have done the Signal Box Art Wrap Installations, the public mural at the community park, financial support to arts agencies, inventory update of the city's art collection. Oh, that was a really good one to do this year. Support and feedback for the Veterans Plaza and Parks Bond. And this particular piece of artwork is called "In Between." It is by Ryan Olaya. And you might recognize it as the bridge over Hedges Creek with Starbucks behind me. Little bit of artistic license in the landscape going forward, but it's pretty. The next one, the community mural. Fourth wall means something else to me. But it was the fourth wall on the building in our community park. Redstone Rodolfo Serna was the amazing artist who pulled everything together. I think it's absolutely magnificent. We used 37 volunteers, multi-generational, some of the faces here, I remember from being there. And it's on the west wall, it was completed in May of 2022. Signal box wraps, they are addictive. The one on the left is at Southwest Martinazzi and Southwest Nyberg. You can see the artist there is Mary Fran Anderson. It was installed also in May of 2022. She is a local artist, which is one of the reasons, I believe, she scored quite high on that. This particular box, I believe, is a good placement because you come into town right as you have that beautiful bronze geese. The other one is called "Forget Be Not." And it's at Southwest Warm Springs and Southwest Boons Ferry. The artist is Jennifer Geiger. She is not a local artist because of the content, though we felt it was a really, really good one for that particular location. You can see it from Twelton, sure. It's absolutely magnificent, in my humble opinion. It was installed in May of 2022 as well. We also were able to do arts agency support grants. We were able to equally support four arts organizations who benefit Twelton. Mask and Mirror Community Theater Company, Wilsonville Stage, don't let the name dissuade you, they do arts in Twelton as well. SNA Irish Entertainment and Willowbrook Arts Camp. And if I may say, it's one of the longest and most prestigious arts camps for kids in Oregon. 2023 goals. We would like to expand, well, we are going to expand the traffic signal box. Boom, that's a mouthful. Program through community awareness and sponsorship opportunities, double fingers. We will identify future arts programs and projects. We always do, we've got a lot of minds clicking. We will continue to support local arts programming through grants and awards. Thank you, council, for supporting that. Support and facilitate arts installations with the new Parks Bond projects. This, you may, you probably know, is a conceptual representation of the Veterans Plaza. The orb in the center of that is where an arts installation will be. We will be so lucky to be able to help with the choosing of the art that goes there. And I think it will be beyond anyone's expectation. Absolutely brilliant. Service-inspired arts components in the Veterans Plaza. And knowing my group of creative, dedicated, amazing, my arts committee people, I just absolutely adore them. We'll get the job done, and hopefully everyone will be incredibly happy. That's it. We did, 2022.
Well, I just, of course, I want to thank you and the entire arts committee for your wonderful work and working with you. This, my whole last term is really a privilege. And to see just what we did last year, coming through and out of COVID, and the way that you and the committee support other artists and the arts in our community, it's really needed. And we have such a great crew. So Julie does also, I want to acknowledge your work, being a wonderful lead person. And I also want to talk about Ross comes to pretty much every single meeting. There's just so much dedication to this group. And I get to report later that I went and met with you guys again, yet again, this month. But it's exciting things coming up. And I also just want to congratulate you on your second year of chairing after a long time of having the same chair. So I also say yay for women leadership and just think that you're doing a phenomenal job. Although you're very shy and you need to speak up a little bit more, but besides that, we're, no, it's just such a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I like that handsome man on the what was blue slide. Yeah, I was about to call, and I just wanted to say that it was the funnest day. You mean that a great community event, there was music and, like me that aren't artists of anything, I felt very comfortable, was told it's okay, and it was just fun, and everybody was very friendly, and I just.
Thank you, thank you for coming, yeah.
That's it, thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to items for movement consent. We didn't have any. So now we'll go to council communications. I'll start from my right with Councilor Sacco.
I don't have any communications today.
With Hillier.
Nothing to report.
Councilor Reyes.
Nothing to report.
Councilor Gonzalez. Wait, she takes it back.
I'm taking it back. I did attend, sorry, my first core area committee meeting, sorry, I totally forgot I was part of this. And it was just great to meet the people that I will be working with for the next couple of years. And thank you, and I'm very excited about that specific committee. We basically introduced ourselves, and it was kind of like, there's some transitions going on. But we did say that encourage others to apply for that committee. So if you're in the core area, which would include where the comments are, if you work or you own a business or affiliated with that business or run that, you're encouraged to apply. So go ahead and apply, they need two committee members. So I'm just making a call to anyone that's out there hearing me to resupply. And so we can have more people in the committee, more voices. Yeah, that was it, but it was, it was a good, good start.
Senator Gonzalez.
I attended my first 205 tolling. I know it's a big subject with a lot of veins coming to it, but I did ask on traffic studies and what their plans were around that. So they're going to supposedly reach out for updates on what they did there, and I will report back to have more information. All I got.
Senator Brooks.
I, I just want to mention a few things, especially since we passed the grants this week about the Juanita, or this evening about the Juanita Poll Center. So I've been attending the Art to Feed the Soul classes. And there's going to be an art gallery kind of presentation at the Poll Center on March 4th. And the whole community is welcome to come. We have room for like 100 people. So we love, there's going to be art, story, and food. So come and, and support people that have been working on their projects. And I also went both Wednesdays to Rotary. One of the speakers was from Surrattie Lane and talking about cost for treatment versus cost for sending people to jail, and it was very interesting. So if anybody wants more information on that, please reach out, and I can give you contact information. And also I attended one of the Earthwise Group classes on mindfulness. And that was something that we also looked at for grants today, so I thought I'd bring that up. I want to mention also that between now and last time we met, we celebrated Martin Luther King Junior Day. And I spent some time looking at the principles that he set forth and studied and looked at some old clips of his, and especially around violence. And I also want to mention, it's Lunar New Year, so you're the rabbit. And we all know of the horrible tragedy that happened this weekend. So I just want to acknowledge our API community that's feeling this new year in a different kind of a way and hope despite that, that we all have a lot to celebrate this year. And I encourage people when they're thinking about this violence to look at Martin Luther King Junior's work because it's some really practical, good work to look at. I went to the League of Oregon City Women's Caucus meeting on the 17th, and we held our elections. And we're fully, our executive board is fully, everyone's there. So, so after elections, we had to hire a few, or we had to elect a few more folks. We also did the Twelton Community Police Foundation meeting, and it was good to hear from chief that we've hired a couple more officers and some exciting plans that I'm sure Council President Pratt will be excited to talk about. They're coming up. And I also, after that meeting, went over to the, well, went home and did the Twelton Arts Advisory Committee, where we are looking at more traffic box wraps that will be close to schools. So more to come, exciting information. And they're also putting their heads around the work that the committee will be doing, as they mentioned, with the Veterans Plaza. I attended a here-together presentation about the homeless services that I was talking about that are being stood up by our medical community. If anybody wants more information on that, please let me know. And then I went to the Clean Water Services Essentials Training on the 19th and learned so much about this world-class, award-winning organization that takes care of the entire river that we hear of Twelton. And there's going to be more coming on that. So if anybody wants the materials from that, please let me know, I'd be happy to share. And then, like the rest of my, of our council, I attended the Advance, which is our retreat over the last two days, Friday and Saturday, and just found the conversation with our directors, our leaders from our city, our police chief, and my fellow counselors and mayor, very, everybody, nobody just phones it in, everybody shows up and works really hard to try to bring our vision forth and what our priorities are going to be for the following year, how we're going to work well together. I took my notes, made some personal changes for myself, and then contributed what I think would be important initiatives for the upcoming year and things that I promised during the election. And it was exciting tonight to hear about the Climate Action Plan in that context. This week, I will also be hearing from the PAB presentations. And we'll be doing ratings for the Home and Community Development Block Grants. And I will be going to Capitol Day on Wednesday, so it'll be a full week again. Thanks.
I went to the Seaport Metro and then the I-205 diversion, maybe. The, the environmental NEPA study is supposed to be done within a couple of weeks. And so we'll see how that turns out. And then their current little graph timeline shows that the earliest tolling will be implemented is Q4 2024. Rumors of different groups, so that's what they're showing. Oh, that, we had someone from Washington State Department of Transportation try to do a comparison of what. of what implementing tolling was like there. And the things I got out of it was that, um, well, there was a lot of pushback, of course, because they have alternate routes that are much better than ours, better transportation. But it wasn't really apples to apples comparison. But, um, also they talked about, um, one thing they brought up was, um, the infrastructure for the tolling itself, like the, uh, cost. And he talked about cost sharing and someone pushed back at ODOT and they didn't actually say that communities wouldn't have any part of this. And part, one thing they said that really turned out to be is a lot of the talking about data sharing once, um, tolling is implemented and ODOT, um, specifically said that, you know, they're not going to have, um, the funds or the, um, manpower, I guess, to, um, track this on roads that aren't ODOT roads. So to me that means Portland, right? So that's how that's going to affect us. We're going to get data from ODOT, but it's, I don't know how useful it's going to be when we don't have any diversion. But I got out of that anyway. And then, um, yeah, 12th Community Police Foundation saved the date, July fifteenth because um, we got the herd at Shinner Rennis for that, um, afternoon and, um, Chief Pickering is going to show off his burden.
Um, on August thirteenth, uh, Sheriff Garrett of Washington County was kind enough to give the Washington County Mayor's a tour of the jail facility in Hillsborough. Uh, he did a presentation with his team first, and then we actually toured the facility. Um, he alluded to when he gave us his presentation about the jail, that the jail, uh, has some challenges right now. Uh, jail is now twenty six years old. And this is what's shocking, given that we know the situation financially for Washington County, that they have thirty eight million dollars in jail infrastructure needs currently right now. Uh, twenty five million of that is for their aging, that is that end of life. They need a new roof. That's ten million because that's an end of life. And the fire detection system is obsolete and that's one point six million. So, uh, the questions the mayor's had, where, where are you going to find this money? And that's TBD, uh, like we're all awaiting the Washington County budget in, uh, April and see what's going to happen. If they're going to have to go out to bond or how they're going to find the money. And this is just the jail. They've got other facilities, uh, that they haven't touched. Shocker was that Washington County does not have a capital improvement plan. They have no idea how much they have to fix. So they're doing that right now. Uh, to cement it in the mayor's minds that the jail needed some money is we all got stuck in an elevator. We're stuck in a jail. He's, the chief is laughing. Yeah. And it's a routine thing that when they move prisoners from the general population to different parts of the jail, there's this one elevator that most of the guards are very well trained on how to reset the elevator. And he, the one of the guards was joking about it as we got into it and it happened. So we were stuck in there for about twenty minutes until they could fix the elevator. And as I'd said to Captain Pickering this weekend, I can't imagine being a sheriff with five, six prisoners in an elevator. I'm it in that elevator for fifteen to twenty minutes. So I give those gentlemen and ladies credit. Um, on the eighteenth, went to a GPI board meeting. That's Greater Portland, Inc. Uh, we reviewed the budget for this year and it was approved. They're doing a very big investor recruitment. Basically that's, you know, getting people to join GPI, bigger, small businesses. And they're working with a, uh, marketing company to help revamp the image of Portland across the United States, uh, so that we can, um, really ramp up a retention or recruitment campaign to bring businesses to the region. Um, on the nineteenth, they had the Small Cities Consortium version of GPI, which is a small cities that comprise, uh, Greater Portland, Inc. And it was just a reminder of all the resources that are available. Uh, there's all kinds of databases that, um, if you don't pay big bucks for, you won't have access, but since we're members of the consortium, uh, Jonathan Taylor has all the resources, all kinds of data so that he can use it to recruit businesses in the area. Uh, and then on the nineteenth, over in Wilsonville, uh, was the WEA legislative reception where uh, new legislators and old legislators, or I should say returning legislators, uh, had a Q and A panel. I was very excited to see, uh, Ben Bowman, you know, you know, take on some questions and, you know, new Senate Majority Leader, Rob Wagner. They both did very good jobs. Uh, it was a great turnout, big time politicos. It was pretty enjoyable. Uh, and finally today, uh, the RTEC, the Regional Toll Advisory Committee, another two and a half hours of just, you know, lots and lots of questions. Uh, I'm just going to highlight, there's an initiative by ODOT and this can be a lot of acronyms. There's an initiative to merge or consolidate the timeline of the different, when they start tolling on two oh five and the whole region, ODOT is looking to shorten that timeline. They want to do with, you know, probably within a month of each other versus waiting years. So they're aggressively looking how to do that. Uh, as Council President, uh, Pratt mentioned, I questioned pre-construction tolling starting at the end of twenty twenty four. I asked, what's pre-construction? Well, that's a toll we're going to collect on the Abernathy Bridge, which at that point should be almost done. And the non-existent lanes on two oh five, they're going to start tolling that. They're going to start value pricing of tolling before the additional lanes are there. Because they need the money to get the money, get to get, fill up the bank account, if you will, to pay for the additional lanes on two oh five. Uh, and I question that because the trucking industry, the representative of the trucking industry said, okay, if you do that, you realize all the trucks that are moving regionally will shift from using two oh five because they're trying to avoid the congestion of I, uh, Portland. It will shift to I five. Because they don't want to pay the toll. So imagine all the trucks are using on two oh five going to I five. And that what's going to happen to I five unless they do the regional wide tolling, which they're, again, they have to go through the NEPA analysis before they can do that. Um, the committee beat up on ODOT to the point where ODOT has committed. We have hundreds of questions, not, I'm literally hundreds of questions on what are the revenue projections and how are you going to spend it? And when can we see the money being reinvested into that, taking care of mitigation versus the capital costs and ongoing costs of bringing it? We're supposedly going to get answers to that pretty soon. Um, one of the numbers they put out today that was questioned is that how much money are you projecting to raise with these tolls on two oh five? They said five hundred to eight hundred million. As we said, so what's the time range for that five hundred, eight hundred million? That's thirty years. So as a new mayor of West Lynn, Rory brought up, isn't the cost of the two oh five lane seven hundred million alone? And it was just quiet. So believe me, the RTEC is really, uh, trying to get answers at ODOT, how this is going to work. And finally, there's a new committee being spun up, which is a statewide tolling rule advisory committee. So this is the committee that will help ODOT, you know, come up with what, how tolling will work, how low income tolling will work, the folk in Charbonneau. You know, are you going to have special tolling rates for the folks who have to use the bridge to get back and forth? How are you going to handle people who, uh, don't pay their toll, all that stuff? And it was brought up that there was not one BIPOC agency on that list. And that Clackamas, the government of Clackamas County wasn't represented on this committee. And ODOT has said pretty much the members of the community as it is right now, that's it. Um, so we're going to see if they're going to revisit that or not. Because, uh, especially on the two, you know, having a BIPOC, some kind of BIPOC organization, you know, being able to give them advice, especially Clackamas County, because as, um, Commissioner Savas said, Clackamas County is a major customer on two oh five and wouldn't have, has no voice in how the rules are going to be set. With that uplifting note, that's it for me. Yeah. So the, I always look forward to the RTEC meetings. They're, they're fun. All right. Anything else for this meeting? Do I have a motion to adjourn our city council meeting?
I'll move.
Okay, I got both two seconds to adjourn. This meeting, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. All right. Did you want to need a break before we and have our Development Commission meeting? It shouldn't be that long. So five minutes.
Recording stopped.
In our first TDC meeting of the year, so I'll go ahead and call the order, the January twenty third, twenty twenty three Walton Development Commission meeting. Uh, first up is public comment. Uh, just like back in our city council meeting, public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the commission on any item that's not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments for about three minutes. If there's anyone here or in Zoom who would like to address the commission, this would be the appropriate time. Seeing none, I'll go to the consent agenda. Uh, the consent agenda, those items are considered routine will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the commission select one of the items removed and heard separately later night. That the consent agenda consists of scrolling down two items, consideration of approval of the 12th and Development Commission Meeting Minutes of September twelfth, twenty twenty two. Item number two, consideration of resolution, number six, three, four, dash, twenty three of the 12th and Development Commission approving the annual financial report for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. Were any commissioner like to have this, any of these two items pulled and heard separately later tonight?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as read. Any questions on those motions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions. It passes unanimously. With that, that brings us to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor to adjourn the 12th and Development Commission of, uh, January twenty third. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. It's unanimous. Thank you. Good evening. Have a terrific night. In our first TDC meeting of the year, so I'll go ahead and call the order, the January twenty third, twenty twenty three Walton Development Commission meeting. Uh, first up is public comment. Uh, just like back in our city council meeting, public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the commission on any item that's not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments for about three minutes. If there's anyone here or in Zoom who would like to address the commission, this would be the appropriate time. Seeing none, I'll go to the consent agenda. Uh, the consent agenda, those items are considered routine will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the commission select one of the items removed and heard separately later night. That the consent agenda consists of scrolling down two items, consideration of approval of the 12th and Development Commission Meeting Minutes of September twelfth, twenty twenty two. Item number two, consideration of resolution, number six, three, four, dash, twenty three of the 12th and Development Commission approving the annual financial report for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. Were any commissioner like to have this, any of these two items pulled and heard separately later tonight?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as read. Any questions on those motions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions. It passes unanimously. With that, that brings us to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor to adjourn the 12th and Development Commission of, uh, January twenty third. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. It's unanimous. Thank you. Good evening. Have a terrific night.